To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will say that sounds phenomenal with a room full of people. So I want to thank everybody for coming this evening. Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Heinz.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisack.
Here.
And trustee Bund.
Here.
All right, we're all here this evening. Public participation, the first item is the public comment. I suspect that there are folks here that would like to address the board, either on any topic that we're talking about today or really anything that's on your mind, frankly. If you are here specifically to talk for or against any of the agenda items, specifically gas and wash, if you can do that at this time, so we can have our public comment now at the beginning of the meeting, and then we'll move on with the meeting. And as I probably suspect, several of you share the same viewpoint. If you can just reiterate that and maybe not use. Typically, we try and do a two-minute for these, so try and keep it under that and new information if you can.
My name is Mildred McNeil-Janes. I am a resident here in Montgomery. I just wanted to express a concern in regard to the gas station at 30 and Gordon. And the fact that 50 percent of the developments on the west of Orchard would be immediately impacted in terms of the gas station being at the corner, simply because of the fact that we, there are four, there is Candlelight, Fairfield Way, Foxmore, and the subdivision that is closest to Orchard. We are all one entrance in and that same entrance out. We're already affected by the incidence of traffic accidents or, you know, whatever, during rush hours and morning travel. If an incident happens there, you can get so that you cannot get home in the evening and you can be late for work otherwise. It's the south portion of the 50 percent that are connected to Route 30 have multiple other alternatives. They've got Orchard, Mayfield, they've got Gleena. They, if they're coming this way, they can go through Bristol Road, you know, yeah, the Bristol Bridge Road and all of those to get to their home. We cannot. We're stuck, kind of thing. And I really wanted to make that really a shared fact. The other thing is, I think, I know for a fact, there were residents who did their research in terms of what was supposedly coming to that spot. And that research told them that it was going to be low impact. Low impact, as I have been asking residents, has meant something that opens at eight, nine, 10 o'clock in the morning, and closes around five, six, or seven. And that gives the individuals who live on the north side of Orchard, who have a backyard that faces 30, that gives them their home, their patio and all for the evening, for them to enjoy without a lot of spotlight, kind of thing. And I just wanted to really share that, that that is a concern of mine. The gas station at that corner really does impact traffic flow and access. Thank you.
Thank you, Mildred.
Sorry.
If you can maybe pass the sign-in sheet back through the line, speed it up a little bit.
Sure. Okay. So I wrote mine down, so I'm going to be focusing on this because I have two minutes and I have a lot to say. Okay. My name is Yvonne DeLucas and I live on Chad Court. My backyard directly faces the vacant lot. I do not support this regardless of the continued modifications by the gas and wash. I'm here today to protect my family, my property, and my neighbors, of which many of whom I hold dear to my heart. Spills, fires, contamination, health risk, foul smells, traffic and noise, crime and illegal activity are only a small sample of what our residents may face. Major health risks associated with living in close proximity to gas stations can cause cancer, lymphoma, leukemia, just to name a few, with long-term exposure to fumes and vapors such as benzene and xylene can cause lung, kidney, and brain damage. According to the NIH National Library of Medicine, this quadruples for children because they are shorter and have a larger ratio of lung surface area to weight than adults do. In our cul-de-sac of 13 homes, seven have at least two to three kids that are under the age of 10. Our homes are close to natural gas lines. In the event of an explosion or fire, there will be an extremely high risk of damaging those lines, which could cause a larger explosion, possibly wiping out our entire cul-de-sac and the homes off of Adam. As you already know, Route 30 is two lanes at this time. This would greatly add to the congestion that we currently face. It is our right to protect our property value. Homes in Shorewood had a difficulty selling their homes once the gas and wash was built. One family sold their property for 250,000 less than her asking price, and another walked away from their home because they could not sell. This information was provided to me by an anonymous trustee in the Shorewood Village. I'm asking the Village of Montgomery take our pleas into consideration today. In quoting a comment from Lona Jakidis, who is a Shorewood resident of over 23 years, who is also opposed to the gas station near her home, "People who live here don't want it, and our wishes should carry more weight than a formal general manager of a now bankrupt gas city chain." And I couldn't agree more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Russell. I live eight dollars street from her. I live on the corner of Adam and Chad. So I have a wife, married almost 11 years, three children, and on that cul-de-sac of 13 houses, there's easily 20, 20 kids between that cul-de-sac and then a few houses in that's not directly affected by visibly seeing the gas station right there on Chad. Several houses that weren't able to come tonight, who asked me to come in and speak for them as well, who have children. There's a lot of kids in our subdivision. And just like Yvonne said, the research shows that houses that are within 300 yards, about 100, 115 meters of any type of gas station are four times more likely to get leukemia and other types of illnesses, not to mention the possibility of any type of leaks that happen and the leaks from the diesel, from the petroleum, the things that go out. It just completely destroys the soil within a several hundred-yard radius. And you have gardens and you have different people who's planting those gardens and their vegetation and their animals that are going outside and tracking into the grounds and then bringing into their house. It just increases the risk for children and people's health. And so that's what I'm here for, is the main concern is a health factor. Not to mention, if you drive down Adam, the corner of Adam and Gordon, there's no driveways. It's completely open for trucks to park alongside of there. And so that brings a concern for me, seeing truckers parking all along my street and having that issue with there, with all the truckers just being there. And I don't know what's going to happen with truckers. I don't know if you guys know what happens with truck stops, but the issues that happen, I know you have something to say, just with the type of people coming in and out of those locations. So that's my main concern when it comes to the health. And I know it emailed you, my wife emailed you, just the different types of concerns when it comes to health and the risks that are involved, living next to a gas station. And like Yvonne said, houses, when a gas station goes up, it's like number two on the list of decreasing your property value, next to a nuclear power plant being next to your house. It's number two on the list, above gentlemen's clubs, well, other things like that. And so I don't want to have to move. I know the families who have lived in the subdivision, I've been there 10 years, don't want to have to move and seeing our kids play together and be together because of something like this. There's property for sale right next to the police station, just right up the street, the next street light up. That's not going to be next to residents. And so my opinion, my thought is, why can't we put something there instead of right next to residents? So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Russell.
Hi, my name's Rich Worup. I have 31 years driving truck, everything from tractor-trailer on down. As you can tell, I currently still am. Our station does have diesel pumps, so anybody that tries to say they can keep it 100 percent clean is full of it. We could be inside a closed building in the summer and you can smell that diesel from the pumps outside. Not only that, if this does pass, I hope you listen to people and you put restrictions on the streets, Adams, Gordon, and Prescott, for weight limit. I can tell you right now, from me today, driving a semi, I was sitting in a residential area with my truck running for an hour on my break. Reason I was there, there was no weight limits and I'm required to take an hour break. You do not shut a diesel truck down. You keep it running. So anybody that's parked on Adams for these diesel pumps, they will be running the trucks the whole time, pouring diesel fumes into the air and affecting everybody around. That's really all I wanted to say.
Thanks, Rich.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Pete Sevilla. I had an opportunity earlier in the week to speak to probably most of you, so I'm just going to reiterate, kind of, I also followed up with an email that I sent you. So I'm just going to reiterate some of the points that I made in there. And I'm going to, before I go into that, ask the board to uphold the decision they've had on this gas station previously, and that is to vote no for the proposed plan. But as I mentioned in my email, probably about the best description that I heard is that gas station car wash in this area is probably too intense for that area with the homes and the townhomes that are in that area. While I am pro-development, I don't, I think we can do better. So putting a gas station and car wash there along with diesel trucks and the widening of traffic is too intense for all the families and children that play in that area. There's a running path that I see families all the time riding their bikes up and down. So I could just imagine traffic coming off of 30, turning into that area to partake in the business that's going on there. So I provided some other examples of what I think could probably be a better use of the land there. So, you know, I'm not without suggestion, while I don't know all the particulars and details of what it takes in land purchases and regulations and all that, I think as a community, we can do better. So I know that area is starting to build up, things are softening with the economy, so I think we can do better than a gas station and car wash to start with in that area. So I'll ask the board again to please uphold the last decision and vote no on the proposed plan for the gas station. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
My name is Marion Bond. I live in the Foxmore subdivision. And I think that there are simply too many negative impacts of the proposed development, the gas station car wash, video gaming establishment. You've heard from many people about the health concerns and the traffic concerns. I'm concerned about the lights that would be at the gas station on all night and my neighbors whose properties back up to 30 that won't be able to use their backyards or their patios for family parties or family gatherings because of the light pollution. I think that there are a lot of other low-impact types of developments, perhaps a memory care center, some kind of a small nursing facility, doctors' offices, dental offices. We can do better, as the last speaker said, than this proposal. So perhaps if the property owners will work with the development department, they can come up with something much more acceptable. Thank you.
Thanks, Marion.
Hello, I'm Amy Breido. I've addressed the board several times on this matter, and I have to reiterate once again that these implications for this go far beyond today and far beyond tomorrow and into our children's health, the wellness of our community. And it's starting to feel as if we are negotiating not just our well-being in our homes and having our children have the ability to grow up healthy and strong, but negotiating our homes and transferring this feel of, I know that our community can use the money and the taxpayers should have some say in how you are going to be using that space. It will have significant impacts forever. We won't ever be able to take this back. It will never be healthy again. And so I have to ask, like the last, and all of us here standing here, that you please vote no and find some other way within our community to help us grow as a community rather than shrinking us as a community, making us fearful to be in our own neighborhoods, unsure of what's going to be coming in, what implications it will have for our health, our well-being, and for our families. So I ask you to please vote no again. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
My name is Laura Thompson, and I've lived in Blackberry Crossing with my husband and two kids, aged 14 and 12, for the past 12 and a half years. I thank the members of the village board for the opportunity to address you. I've also sent emails to all of you, and I thank some of you that actually responded to me. I'm here because, today because we are opposed to this special use permit being granted. We are not opposed to business coming to Montgomery. Bring it on. I think we have to look at the whole picture. We have to look at the type of community that has been created in this area. Beautiful homes, parks, bike paths, beautiful ponds and neighborhoods filled with families and small children, sorry, families riding bikes, groups of kids playing in their yards, groups of kids walking to various ponds to fish on an early summer day. People live out here because at night, on a clear day, you can see millions of stars in the sky. Life can be very good in Montgomery. We can't sell our community's soul just to fill a parcel of land. And I feel like that is what is happening here. It's a mere suggestion, it's the possibility of our property taxes being lowered for a short while. We look at changes that will affect this area of the land, the families who live here, our property values, the environment, and the residents for years to come. When we moved here 12 and a half years ago, we were told that the lot was zoned commercial residential. We were originally told that a Walgreens would be in that location, and we were fine with that. We actually assumed that over time, a small strip mall or some other business would be built there. I specifically called the village before we purchased our homes and asked if this was zoned for a gas station, and I was told it was not. I don't want video gambling in this family neighborhood. I think video gambling cheapens neighborhoods, drive around really nice towns in the Chicagoland area, and you do not see video gambling. We don't want another huge gas station, car wash, liquor-selling, video gambling establishment in this residential neighborhood. There was a Facebook poll administered by one of the trustees, and it was 79 percent against, 79 percent of the residents who may or may not vote in future Montgomery elections. 79 percent is a huge number, almost too big to ignore. I'm pretty sure, and I address to the owners, lawyers, architects of this business, as well as to the trustees and governing officials in this village, if this was proposed in your backyard and any of you were in our positions, I don't think you would want this either. There are many locations where this type of business would be a lot better. Maybe we could all work together to find a better fit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gary Breido. I live in Blackberry Crossing West with my wife and three children. I'm asking that you vote no on this. A lot of my concerns have already been addressed by other people, especially the video gaming. It had been said many times that this was not going to be a destination, but I feel like if they're bringing in video gaming, that is a destination. People are going to be hanging out there. I'm concerned about the crime that this is going to bring, possibly. We were talking about this around the dinner table tonight with our children, asking them what they felt about it, and my 16-year-old son said that, you know, his room, they could build it as high of a wall as they want, put trees, whatever, but his room window is still going to be looking at a gas station. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Mori, and I've lived in Blackberry Crossing now for 10 years. Thank you, trustees. Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to speak tonight, as well as allowing me to interview with you for a position on the Plan Commission. And I understand and appreciate that it went to someone else who I feel is eminently qualified as well. I have a couple of questions, reading the meeting minutes from the Plan Commission on March 1st, which people here have noted, they were unanimously against this gas station proposal. And they went so far as to say, no gas station, not any gas station. You, Mr. President, were also quoted in a video that came on the Montgomery site that it was not low impact, it was too intense, quote unquote. So what is the purpose of a Plan Commission that states unequivocally that they are against this development? And it still moves forward to a point where the trustees now are unanimously in favor? How does that translate? I think that comes from curious looks. I think that comes from meeting minutes that were published, if I may.
That was some bad information because the board was not unanimous in its vote.
I'll address that as well.
I'm sorry?
We accept a Plan Commission recommendation.
Oh, that's...
We accept a Plan Commission recommendation, but as far as voting, no.
Well, that was very confusing in your minutes.
The Plan Commission provides recommendations to the village board. The village board has to accept the fact that the Plan Commission made a recommendation. It's up to the village board ultimately if we approve with the recommendation of the Plan Commission or are against it. But I've been a solid no the whole time.
Okay, I, the minutes that were produced were confusing, and I apologize if anyone was misled. However, those meeting minutes also stated that the Plan Commission, what they were opposed to was the traffic and accident. That is what went into those minutes and not the fact that it is currently zoned as B1, B2, which is residential commercial. And there's a quote saying that it is similar to the B3 recommendation, B3 zoning in front of the Walmart. And that is regional commercial, which does allow for gas stations, but B1, B2, in your, our zoning ordinances, do not. And I just want to point that out as well. The village engineer, EEI, has also stated that these access points that are being proposed now are not in conflict with IDOT's proposals. And I am curious to know how EEI can possibly foresee IDOT's future. They, IDOT, has recommendations, but to say that this proposal does not affect those, I think, is a stretch. Also, how is it economically feasible? There are diesel fuel, diesel truck fuel stations within two miles in either direction. Already, there's a brand-new car wash a mile and three-quarters away. This stretch of road does not generally, is it two-lane? Yes, they will eventually broaden it, but it is not for tractor-trailers, it is not for diesel fuel trucks to, as stated, idle waiting. It's not built for heavyweights. I'm also concerned that, yes, there is water and sewer available, but what about the other utilities? Who's paying for the other utilities to serve this site for any purpose? Have there been any Village of Montgomery tax incentives offered for this development? Traffic, safety, health, economic sense, please consider them all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And just to clarify, there are no development incentives for this project. There's no development agreement that we're working on.
I just think, thank you.
How are you?
My name is Joe Marshall. I lived in the Foxmore subdivision for almost 13 years. My backyard, I'm seven houses east of Gordon, and my backyard and deck will face the gas station, almost directly in line. I'm against it, 100 percent against it, the noise, air, and light pollution and added traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Good evening. My name is Chris Haller. I own a property on Gallant-Fox, and I also own a single-family home about a mile and a half down the street from there. And I just want to reiterate what my friend right here just said. We have a Speedway gas station one mile away on the east side. We have another gas station one mile away on the west side. We have the huge Fuller's car wash just built. I don't understand why a gas station is what we're thinking about. And I just want you guys to think, economically, it's a great idea, we've got to build up. I just don't think a gas station's a great idea. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Good evening. I'm Mike Martin. I live in Huntington Chase subdivision, which is about a mile south on Gordon from the intersection. I just want to reiterate the previous points about light pollution, environmental concerns, traffic concerns. I think that the, the fact that we already have a gas station and car wash at 30 and Orchard is enough. That's a great location for those services, and I think that Gordon and 30 is a bad location for those services. So I would like you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Hi, my name is Holly Fowler. I live in Huntington Chase. Purchased my house in 2007, and it was very much aware by everyone, you can see the signs that there was going to be commercial development at some point coming. I think, you know, in that time, we've seen a lot kind of come up by Walmart. I think that there hasn't really been anything much that people of Montgomery have been super excited about. And certainly, based on what's been said tonight, I'm not hearing anyone excited about a gas station car wash coming in on that spot. There's, obviously, we've already heard that there's gas stations available, there's car washes available. I think what you're hearing, and I really hope that you guys are listening, is that the people of these areas, we're more than welcome to some development, but we want it to be family-friendly. We want it to be something that we want, that's going to be good for our community. I think what we've heard mostly are negative things, and I don't think that the tax, the benefit of a little bit lower taxes for a short amount of time are outweighing the negatives that you're hearing tonight. So I hope you hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Hi, my name is Lisa Kasbarian. I live in Huntington Chase as well, off of Manchester Drive. After listening to all the folks that have come up here in opposition, there's not much more I can say, being the last one standing here. I'm like, okay, everything that I, every point that I wanted to make tonight has been said. You know, I have three young children, 10, just turned seven, and three, and we go up to that corner all the time on our bikes, walking the dogs, that sort of thing. I don't want that to be a place where my daughter, as she's getting 11, 12, 13, wants to go up and hang out when trucks are coming in and out. I don't want that to be a video gaming place when there's one right at Calamity Janes a mile away. You know, we've got gas stations, we've got car washes, all within a very short radial distance from this proposed location. So it does not make sense in any sense of the word. You know, I've been in real estate for 13 years and residential, and I fully agree with all of these people when they say it is going to impact their property value. It will significantly... It will significantly impact their property value when they are now backing to a gas station with gas and diesel. It just does not make sense for our community. It does not make sense for that location. It is too intense. I agree wholeheartedly, and I hope that you will vote no this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
There are more behind you.
Hello, I'm Brian Dolan. I'm with Dolan &amp; Murphy Real Estate, commercial brokerage in the area. Handle a lot of property in Montgomery. I'm also a founding member of Montgomery Economic Development Corporation. I think I might be the only one here speaking for the project tonight. I also handle the property directly to the east of this property. And I just feel that this is a suitable use for this site, and I think it could be a catalyst for future development going east. And I understand there's a tremendous amount of tax dollars that this does generate. So we've located several restaurants in the, in the area, or, not restaurants, but gas stations in the area. And in our opinion, as a commercial broker, we do feel that this is a suitable corner for this type of use. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
No, not yet.
Do I have to sign away my first name or anything?
No.
Just going to put my address online.
That's okay. Sure.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name's Kyle. I live in Lakewood Creek. I represent, as a 33-year-old male, husband, father, pastor, church planter, I represent the prototypical, average, median-aged person in, on the west side of Montgomery. In a two-and-a-half-mile radius, you're looking at a guy who's married for almost 12 years, has three sons, loves the community, loves the tight-knit, familial-type feel to the community. So here, here's an email that I jotted to one of you, and I'll just kind of ad-lib through it as I go. "I really do praise God and thank you for serving as leaders in our community. I really do pray for each of you by name on a weekly basis. You may not even know me or believe that, but it's true. I pray that you'd have wisdom to know what's right, and courage to always do what's right, especially when it's hard. So thanks for the opportunity a few months back to share about our church planting work at your Village Board meeting in January. Some of you have been gracious enough to continue the conversation, and I look forward to meeting with you soon." At the time, I thought maybe I was too late to the conversation, and I might be too much of a dreamer for this room, but I'll go ahead and just go out on this limb and share. This vision may not become a reality. I don't necessarily have a spot at the table. But after reading and listening and praying and thinking, this overwhelmingly negative response to the proposed development of a gas and wash, I'll just throw it out there that one of the things that defines existing, established communities that does not define a community like Montgomery, which is so new in many regards because of the development that took place between 2000 and 2008, are churches. And so after praying and thinking about our church plant work as it relates to the development of our community, what is the potential of that property being rezoned and developed for the housing of a church building? Sometimes developers will zone properties for nonprofit development, or government leaders will consider rezoning property for that special use. This location is in an ideal spot. It's surrounded by residential development. It's highly visible on a major highway. One thing I am very much aware of, despite the fact that this proposal does not increase tax revenue through the expansive commercial development, the start of a new church on the west side of Montgomery would be a game changer for the 75% of our village who lives on this side of town within a two-and-a-half-mile radius, with 8,000 homes and 26,000 people, but zero gatherings of a local church. Again, this does not necessarily increase tax revenue, but it does help build Montgomery's identity as a developing community by adding a key component that does not exist in this part of town. It helps us to narrow our focus, deepen our impact, literally love our literal neighbors, and serve our community. If the property is zoned for light-impact neighborhood residential, this may be a realistic compromise for both the village leaders and citizens, because along with a church building could be things like locally-owned restaurants, a community center, after-school care, you name it. There's a lot of opportunities, even maybe a locally-owned coffee shop or something like that to go along with the space. Something that families in that area would feel comfortable walking to, riding their bikes to, connecting with people in the community at. Because if you live or play in our community, you know that that's just kind of who we are and how we roll. I have no idea where the funds and the resources to purchase the property or build a church building would come from at this stage of the ballgame. But putting this option on the table really does seem like something I was convicted to do. Personally, I trust that if it's God's will, then He'll make it possible, because nothing is impossible for Him. All right? I know not all of you may agree, believe, trust, or like what I have to say, but that's all right. All right? That's why we have the beauty of being able to share. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate it.
Ladies and gentlemen, board members, trustee, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time. Appreciate everything. My name is Gary Natro, and I am one of the owners of GLR Ventures. We're the landowner of the property on Route 30 and Gordon. And I just wanted to share a couple of the positive aspects of this proposed gas and wash here. I was sitting on the corner of Route 30 and Gordon less than a year ago, and I was looking up at a sign that said "bank-owned property." So after calling the bank and finding out that the property's been idle for almost eight to 10 years, and limbo from the original developer, I looked at the property and figured it out and said, what do you think would be a great business here, or what's going to work? So I took a look at the property, and I immediately thought, by living in Plainfield and less than a mile away from the new gas and wash, which literally, two blocks away from my house, I thought, what a great location for a gas station. I contacted, I thought that by looking at the, contacted the bank, found out that it would, like I said, it was in bankruptcy and the property was up for sale. So I contacted the village and talked to the village, and wanted to see what they thought would be a good use for the property. The immediate response was that we are getting calls from the residents, that the property's been in limbo for almost eight to 10 years, and that they needed services in the area on the west end of the town. So I contacted the gas and wash people, had them take a look at it, and they thought it would be a great location as well. I think it would be a great location for a convenience store, a market, a fueling station, a place to get a fresh sandwich, Dunkin' Donuts coffee, your car washed. And after living in Plainfield, less than a mile away from the gas and wash, that's exactly what my family and my neighbors do as well. I'd like to talk about some of the positive aspects that this project will bring to the community. Looking at some of the numbers that gas and wash does in the state of Illinois, the sales tax revenue that generates from a gas and wash will bring approximately $400,000 to $500,000 a year in tax revenue to the village, which equates to about $4 to $5 million over a 10-year prop, 10-year time. This will allow the board to continue to make choices like they have been with these property tax freezes, which I think is a wonderful amenity for the community. Local economy, local economy will also employ 40 to 50 local people. People like Cindy Gorchowski. Cindy Gorchowski is a single mother of two, who lives in Plainfield, works for gas and wash, and in being employed by gas and wash, it allows her and her two children to own a home in Plainfield and raise her family in the community. This, this decision tonight is greater than simply a gas station on the corner of Route 30 and Gordon. Each and every one of you have the opportunity to keep Montgomery growing, creating infrastructure, creating jobs for your community, and bringing servants of the residents to the Montgomery Village. So I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gary.
I'm the owner of Gas and Wash. I just wanted to make a couple comments. We went through the similar board hearings at, in Shorewood. Actually, there, we had three rooms full of people. There was a lot of negativity about it. The, the mayor and the board did explain to the people that if I listen to everybody, then they wouldn't have Home Depot, they wouldn't have Portillo's, they wouldn't have Target, because every time a different group of people came out to protest them. So the station was approved, and the station was built. We've had, now we've been open for more than two years, we've had zero complaints. Okay? As a matter of fact, we've had nothing but compliments, and some of the neighbors have come into the store right away and said, hey, sorry about what happened, we thought it was going to be like this. And, and it's not, and we've had just compliments, not, not complaints. Our other nine stores, zero complaints. I haven't heard of a, of the neighbors come in and complaining in these issues that, you know, they sound right, and maybe they're scary about pollution, health issues, traffic, light pollution. Those are non-issues. I've been doing this a long time. Okay? The, the traffic, we're not traffic generators, we feed off of the traffic on the street, the neighborhood. The lights are, they're different today, they're, everything is down, they don't shine all over like years ago, where the lenses were this far down from the canopy. I think we're a good neighborhood business, and it's just not what a lot of the things that, that I hear about. Because if it was, you, you guys would have heard about Plainfield and Shorewood here about how bad we are, and how bad that business is, and it's not happening. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Lori Schelling. I'm one of the landowners. So our goal with this property was to bring a really, really great end user to Montgomery. And, you know, we're very, we were very fortunate to have Gas and Wash be interested, because quite frankly, when it comes to gas station service markets, Gas and Wash is the very high end of the high end. They do a beautiful job. If you go in to their little markets, it's more like a market. It's not like, this is not a truck stop. It's a market that sells gas. They, the structure that they have agreed to put up and the compromises that they've agreed to make are by far, will make this the nicest gas service station market in Montgomery or any of the surrounding communities. You're not going to find a nicer one in Aurora, Naperville, Plainfield. They're offering to do a lot, and they've made a lot of compromises. As landowners, we are very, very sensitive to the neighborhood. That's why we reconfig, reconfigured, sorry, I'm nervous, the property, so it made a huge buffer. And we also are agreeing to put up some trees along Adams, correct? You know, to make it a lot nicer. And one more compromise we're willing to do is, so we feel that the corner, the back corner, would be best served, hopefully, as a daycare. Because I can't imagine how far all of the young families have to drive to get daycare, because there's nothing very close. We feel like it'd be a huge convenience. But the other one to one and a half acres, we would be willing to donate that to the surrounding neighborhoods to use as they please. They'd have total control of that property. They could use it as a neighborhood garden. They could, they could sell it off and develop it with whatever they wanted, and they would have complete control. So, you know, this process is all about compromise, and we are really, really trying to put our best foot forward and give the best possible compromise that we can, within our ability. So I really hope that you all take that into consideration. I appreciate all your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
All right. Is there anybody else? Don't want to cut anybody off here, do want to move along? So we will, the board will discuss this when the item comes up later on in the meeting. But really do appreciate all the residents coming, sharing your concerns, and being respectful to the, to the petitioner at the same time. So I really do appreciate that. So we're going to move on with the meeting. We have several items, and what I'd like the board to consent to really is, I'm going to run through all of these, we'll do the public participation, and then get, do consent, and then take a break for, okay, 15 minutes. I was going to do that up at the, at the top here, but I want to get the consent approved. I know there's people here for those items, that way they don't have to stay for that. So with that, I will invite our chief of police, or who's chief or deputy, come up to introduce a swearing-in of Officer Alex Lopez. Do you have a PowerPoint this time?
A shorter one, I believe. Thank you, Village President, Village Board members, Village staff and guests in attendance this evening. It's good to see everybody. We did have several members from our organization here, but they did have to go out for a call. It's an emergency call, but there's no danger or anything we need to be concerned about here. But just as a reminder, they're out there doing their job, supporting each other, and welcoming our new members to the family. So first, let me introduce our newest, two of our newest officers. I'll start first with Alex Lopez. With Alex tonight in the crowd, if you could just raise your hand, is his wife, Yessenia Father Gilbert Lopez, and Mother Linda Martinez. Father-in-law, Jose Mendoza. Mother-in-law, Alexia Sarabia. Uncle Confesor Lopez. And all, some additional family and friends in attendance, so thank you for coming. Alex was hired by the Montgomery Police Department on December 26th of 2017. He successfully graduated from the Celia Basic Academy, number 18-03, on April 13th of this month. He comes to us with some prior experience. He served as court security with the King County Sheriff's Office since 2015, was also part-time with Cortland Police Department and the Freeport Police Department. He also graduated from the Police Training Institute in 2013. He has an associate's degree in criminal justice from Wabazi Community College in 2015. He resides in Montgomery, where his hobbies include spending time with family, his wife, and his dogs. So at this time, the Village President will swear in Officer Lopez. Can you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Alex, state your name.
I, Alex Lopez.
Do solemnly swear
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois
And that I will faithfully discharge
And that I will faithfully discharge
The duties of a police officer
The duties of a police officer
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Congratulations. At this, thank you. At this time, his wife, Yessenia, will be pinning his badge onto his uniform. No pressure, Yessenia.
No pressure, Yessenia. This time, if you want to go around and shake hands, and then we'll do some
Can I take a photo? We're going to take a picture.
If this family would like to come up for photos. Everybody that wants to come up, come on up. I know. That's why we squint. Okay, next I'll be introducing Officer Lauren Buzzard. With Lauren tonight are her parents, Jim and Barb Buzzard. She also said there are many family members and friends in attendance, so if you could all just please, all right, thank you. Lauren was hired full-time on April 22, 2018. She graduated from Western Illinois University in May of 2015 with a bachelor's degree in law enforcement and justice administration. During her senior year at Western Illinois University, she had an internship at the Montgomery Police Department and North Aurora Police Department. So, this is a success story where we have an intern that came here, liked the community, and wanted to pursue her career here. So, in September of 2016, she attended the Police Academy in Champaign, Illinois, and worked for the Peoria Police Department. In August of this, of 2017, she started work for our department as a part-time officer. Lauren resides in Aurora, and as you can see, and I'll have Lauren look at you, she has got one of the most infectious smiles you could see. So, had to say that. So, at this time, the village president will swear her in. And pinning her badge will be her father, Jim. Want to raise your right hand? I, state your name.
I, Lauren Buzzard.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I will faithfully discharge
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police officer
The duties of a police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Again, her father, Jim, will be pinning her badge. Lauren. While your family comes down, Lauren will just have you shake hands. Probably going to have to do two rows. Don't take any pictures yet. Somewhere, there's going to be a photo out there of us without her. Come in and get in the middle? Yeah. Awesome. Thank you for coming, appreciate it. New officers. All right, so is anybody, so we're moving on to Municipal Clerks Week. Is anybody here specifically for that item? I was thinking that all of you were, but, well, our clerk, obviously. If it's all right with the board, I'll forego the formal reading of both of these proclamations and so we can speed things along. But entertain a motion to approve the proclamation for Municipal Clerks Week.
So moved.
Can you call the roll?
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
And Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Thank you, carry six-zero, thank you.
Yay, tiny.
And the second one is a proclamation for rain barrel promotion month. Anybody here for rain barrels? I think everybody should be here for a rain barrel, but did you come here only for that purpose?
So moved.
Thank you.
I don't know. Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
All right, that carries six-zero. And so, I'm not going to skip the proclamation for this one, but would like to, at this time, start the recognition of our retiring police chief. Truly has been an honor to serve with you for the last five years. So, I would like to read this proclamation that was drafted in his honor and would entertain a motion for approval, and we'll get a photo and we'll have some cake. So, with that, this is a proclamation for Chief Daniel J. Myers, chief of police. Whereas Daniel J. Myers was hired as a police officer in the Village of Montgomery in February of 1985, after serving as a police officer with the Houston Police Department. And whereas he was promoted to sergeant in 1988 and detective sergeant in 1999, and whereas he was further promoted to deputy chief in 2006, and ultimately named chief of police in 2010. And whereas Chief Myers has expanded his educational horizons by receiving his bachelor's degree in criminal justice and attending the FBI National Academy. Whereas he has been involved in many law enforcement and community organizations as a member of the International Chiefs of Police Association, the Illinois Chiefs of Police Association, and the Kendall and King County Chiefs of Police Association, where he served as a board member and committee chair. And whereas he has spent countless hours during the past 33 years working for the good of the Village of Montgomery. And therefore, I, Matt Rowley, the president of Montgomery, do hereby call upon all of my fellow citizens to recognize the many years of dedicated law enforcement service and valuable contributions of Chief Daniel J. Myers to the Village of Montgomery, wishing him a healthy and enjoyable retirement. So, with that, would like to, on behalf of the village, present Chief Myers here with the plaque that I'll read this and we'll take some photos. This is presented to Chief Dan, oh, so it's not Daniel J. Myers, Daniel C. Myers, so whoever we just did that proclamation for. At least it's printed correctly. In grateful appreciation for 33 years of service to the police department and the community from February 11 of 1985 to April 30 of 2018. And it has your service there. So, with that, thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Would like to invite the board to come up and be in this photo. That's right, Denny, could you?
Me too.
Help Trustee Heinz. Or at least move your chair. What did he say? Can you get everybody in there?
Hold on, I can't get his wallet.
Now, look over this way.
Yeah, turn this way. That'd be nice.
And the formal roast and all of that will be at your retirement gathering. So, thank you, I really appreciate it. Thank you. I should say, you know, outside of the, you know, years of service and really is the progression of his career, really has been truly an honor to serve with somebody that everybody unanimously, as I talk with folks outside of the community, state that he's really a good man, he's working hard for the residents of Montgomery. And so, truly appreciated my time with him, so.
Would you like a motion to approve?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
And Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
As is customary, we're going to take a 15-minute break to go have some cake in his honor, but I do want to approve the consent agenda first, if that's right with the board. So, I'll read the items, entertain a motion to approve. We have minutes of the village board meeting of April 9, minutes of the special village board meeting of April 11, executive session minutes of April 11, accounts payable through April 19, accounts receivable report from March of 2018, appointment by the village president of Nick Platoes to plan commission for a term through January 31, 2023, and then appointment by the village president of Nick Platoes to the zoning board of appeals for that same term, appointment by the village president of Steve Bowler to the police pension board for a term April 30 through 2020, and the appointment by the village president of Eric Barnes to the pension board for that same term. Item J is ordinance 1807, approving the final plan of a special use for planning development for an apartment complex located in the Ogden Hill subdivision. This is S.R. Jacobson, second reading. And then ordinance 1808, granting a rezoning of 1460 Southeast River Road from R3 Traditional Neighborhood Residential District to B2. This is second reading on that. And item 11 is ordinance 1809, annexing territory for the Aurora University complex. And then we have ordinance 1810, amending the PUD for the AU complex, second reading. And the last item is 1812, amending the village code regarding alcoholic beverage closing hours, again, second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
And Trustee Bond?
Yes.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. At that point, we'll suspend the meeting for 15 minutes at 8:22, we'll start back up. So, go and enjoy some cake, thank you. Doug and Teresa.
Yep, she will, she'll make you open it.
Okay, I do appreciate everybody indulging in that. We're going to go ahead and get started and jump right into it. Items for separate action. The first item we have today is ordinance 1799, granting a special use for Gas and Wash. This is waiver first and passage on the second reading, because we have discussed this at a number of village board meetings at this point. Does staff have anything additional to add? Hunter Tippman?
The only item I have to add is that's some updated material we're in your packets this last week for you to review.
Okay, thank you. I would like to invite, the petitioner have anything else to add on the item? You're welcome to add anything additional at this time.
Good evening, Scott Pritchett with Arso Architects. Thank you again for allowing us to speak. Since our last meeting, we have made adjustments to our plans. We've listened again to what the requests were from the residents, the board members, and added some additional items to our plan. We have some new renderings, if those might be able to come up, to show some of the items. We wanted to stress in the renderings, we've changed our canopy design to be something very similar to what was shown in Shorewood, per the request of the board. You'll see that, as you go through the renderings, you'll see that in several examples. Also, you'll notice that at the back, and there are a couple from the rear of this that were proposing the eight-foot-high solid fence, which is replicate to stone, but it's actually a sound barrier fence that's fabricated by a company specifically for these types of applications, trying to buffer uses from each other, including roadways. You'll see here we have the same types of canopy roofs as the roof on top of the car wash, several different views. We do omit some of the mounds and landscaping here. It's not been completely thought out to conform with the ordinance, but the intent will be that we would be providing those, especially along Route 30. And that is a view of just the vacant lot to the south with the eight-foot-high wall and how it would look from behind initially, without the south lot being developed. I am here to answer any questions you may have, but Lyman, who's representing us, the owner, would like to speak next. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, for the record, my name is Lyman Team, and I'm the owner, I'm the attorney for the owner, Len McHenry. And Len had spoken to you earlier during the public comment session. We're here essentially to address any questions or issues that you may have, but I think what you'll find in the packet that was made part of your board packet for this evening, the new renderings and the layout and things like that, as Scott has addressed, I think that we've, you know, really attempted to comply with some of the requests that have come from the village, both the elected officials and the staff. And we believe that what we have now before you is something have now before you is something that will be a benefit to the community, a benefit to the area, and, you know, essentially if you have any questions, we'd be happy to discuss those with you.
Awesome, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, with that, before we kick off for questions or comments from the board, I do want to say, as somebody that's worked around or been involved with developments in the area, it was a great scenario where the developer came in with a plan that our plan commission unanimously turned down, but then they went back to the drawing board and made some significant edits to the plan, and really have been very agreeable, whether you are an advocate for the project or the use there, I will say this is some of the most agreeable folks to deal with, so I really do appreciate that.
Thank you.
And moving this through that. So with that, I would like to open it up to the board, if you have additional questions of the petitioner of staff. I know we heard a lot of comments from members of the public tonight, I really do appreciate all of you taking time out of your life to come to this, and we'll see you at the next meeting in a few weeks, keep coming back. But with that, all seriousness, open it up to the board for comments.
I would like to just acknowledge the amount of feedback from the community and input and the reasonable and rational folks that reached out and talked, and you were able to have a good, healthy discussion even though you may or may not agree on a point. I really appreciated those folks that made those comments, and again, we really did our homework, at least I know I did, I've been out to several of the gas and washes and talked to residents and the areas, but I really did appreciate those comments. For the folks that are fear mongers and are flooding Facebook with false information and threats, those folks I do not appreciate at all. That's not the way the process should work. You guys coming here tonight and voicing your opinions is exactly what this is supposed to be like, so thank you, I appreciate that.
A couple of items. I'm the trustee, or I'm one of the trustees that put out the Facebook poll, I believe trustee Bond did as well. The results of my poll were 686 votes, total, I think, over a 10- or 14-day period. 21% were in favor, 79% were against, and I've been a no throughout, and I like the use, I don't like the location of the use, and I'm going to be voting no, and usually when I vote no, I explain why I vote no. I'm concerned about methods of ingress and egress into Fairfield and Foxmore, there are certain developmental challenges that gas and wash has no control over, and the fact that there is only one method of ingress and egress into Fairfield-Foxmore is one of those issues. I've mentioned at previous meetings that maybe we need to direct some of our infrastructure funding to creating a solution to that, and maybe bringing it out, I think, to Bertram or something like that. The word I keep hearing, and I know Matt has used it, I've used it, is it's too intense for this use, there's a lot of things happening in this little corner, and I appreciate very much the changes that you guys have made, but we're taking that and we're kind of smushing it into the northern half of that lot. Throughout the discussions with the board and the plan commission, you guys have changed the way, the layout as far as the diesel pumps, and you guys have always said that you want to keep the truck traffic and the vehicle traffic separate, and I brought this up at the last meeting, is that now the truck traffic is coming through and it's either got to turn left to go back out around the fueling canopy, or it's got to turn right, and we know how the car washes get backed up, and even though you've got three stacking lanes here, and I think maybe 18 or 20 cars, I think that we're going to have issues with the right-in, right-out and truck traffic trying to get through and cars trying to get in. It's, once again, I go back to it's too intense a use for this location. I like the use, I like the idea, if it was further down 30, a little bit further west, I wouldn't have any issue with it. I have to understand the homeowners that have purchased their homes and they have these vacant lots, this couple vacant lots out front, and realtors will tell you things that may or may not be true sometimes, as far as future development, because they can't see that far in the future. But it's just, if it was behind my house, I wouldn't like it, it's a little too close. Let's push it further down 30, towards 47, and I would be different.
We certainly appreciate your comments and we understand, you know, your position. We believe that this is a good fit for this piece of property, we've done a lot of things to try and improve the relationship between this development and the neighbors to the north and the south. There are a number of uses on site, the gas station, the convenience store, the car wash, but it's a relatively large parcel of property, and it's spread out elongated east-west now instead of north-south, spreading out more along US Route 30 as opposed to bringing it down south on Gordon to Adam. So, I think we've, you know, we've certainly put forth our best effort, we hope that we've done enough to satisfy the village board, and we're, you know, we're certainly open to other suggestions if you have those, and we can work with staff if we obtain approval tonight to try and, you know, tweak some of the issues even a little bit finer, but we believe that we've done our best effort with this project, and we certainly hope that you support us.
I just want to reiterate a couple of my comments from the last few meetings. First of all, I really appreciate all the changes that have been made, I don't think I've seen that in the five years I've been sitting in this seat, so I really appreciate the work that went into it and the willingness to make the changes. I actually did not go on Facebook on purpose because I didn't want to see all the comments, but I did have conversations, I've had emails sent to me, just residents, just talking to them as I was going about my day, and I would say I've probably talked to about 40 people, and I've had only two people say they were in favor of it. I have also said that we do need a gas station west of Orchard, however, I don't think this is the location based on many of the comments and concerns that were brought up by the residents, and this goes back to even plan commission, we had three residents there that spoke out against it, and then it was denied, and as this has come before us, more and more meetings, we're having more and more people reach out and say they don't want it there. So, again, those have been the three things I've been saying right along, and again, I'm not going to support it tonight for those reasons.
Understand, thank you.
Any other comments?
There you go. You can hold the booze till I'm done if you would, because I haven't changed my opinion on it. Just to answer a couple of the questions, a planning commission is a recommendation. This is a special use, so it has to go to them and then to us, and we have to have a supermajority because they all voted no. I have never, I go out to almost all the planning commissions, and I have never spoken at one, and I feel that they have theirs and I have my meeting, and we listen to what they say and then we make the recommendation. Some of the comments, I guess the negative force, and I was here, it's my 17th, 18th year, or whatever it is, and the biggest problem was, is we had the same negative negativity when Walmart wanted to go in. Everybody said, "We don't want a Walmart," and this was before you guys were even sort of out there, "we don't want a Walmart," you know, "it takes jobs from the little businesses." Well, instead, online took the business, little businesses out, and Walmart, the incentives we gave them, they're all paid for, we get all the money from Walmart now, there's no, we don't, it doesn't cost us a dime, and there's some like North Aurora that turned down a Walmart and put apartments where that spot is, and like they say, that's a lot, like you gentlemen here said, that's a lot of revenue you lost, but, and this is the same type of thing, I think. I think in three, four years, a lot of people, especially the people from hunting and chase, blackberry crossing, when you're over a mile away, I don't know how it's going to affect you, I just cannot see that, I can see you using it for in the morning, in fact, we had one gentleman talk about that, used Dunkin' Donuts and coffee, I can see you guys using it. If you're that far away, I really, I don't know what your complaint is, I know the complaint of the one road in, one road out, but that's entirely different situation, we've talked about that for a long time, and Dan said, "There's been no major accident at that corner." It might be because this gas station will be there, but there hasn't been, but we do have to get another in or out there, there's no doubt about that. But the pack, they always say ask what the taxpayers, but the taxpayers a lot of time will be like the Walmart, they'll say no. The FedEx gentleman, I don't know if he's even here yet, okay, I don't know if your plant's old or whatever, I've got 100 diesel buses over there, we run all the time, nobody can smell anything. You can go over to the gas stations on Orchard, and they got trucks running and everything, and you fill your gas tank up, you can't smell gas, and you can go to Old Dominion, who has just made buses or trucks as you do, I'm sure, you don't smell any gas. Now, you might have old gas, and that's, or old stations or whatever, but like these gentlemen say, the new ones now, you have plastic in them, they don't leak, a lot of them, I don't know what trustee, I think the lady said, had the Sitco on there with the old station on Farnsworth, I pick up a kid right behind that house, the house that was bad, that gas station's been there for years, the ground was bad, it was a bad situation if somebody read this article, but I know the owners real well now, and they're fine, that lady got paid $400,000, $232,000, and even had a settlement after that. So I understand her problem, but at the same time, I guess I don't know why our trustee brought that up, especially with the plastic tanks being the way they are, he's got the vacuums, they moved inside because we asked them to, you don't hear them at all, the hoses are the only thing that comes out, there was so misinformation, the lights do point down, but diesel does not smell. Now, maybe on old trucks, and I gave that up, on landscaping it smells maybe, but nothing else smells, I don't care, you know, what anybody says, you can be glad to come over anytime and try it, there is no big smell where you get gassed and you can't come close to it. The health scares, I just don't, I will say this, I will listen to people on Chad and Adam, they're the ones that are going to be really affected by it, okay? I don't see truck parking on either one of those, and if it passes, I'd make sure that that would not happen, because I can't see trucks parking in front of you either, I think that's a bad situation. But the health issues, like I say, I just can't, I know you disagree with me on the diesel smell, but if you go around, I think you're wrong on that, and I don't think it's going to affect your kids that much. The video gaming, one lady mentioned Clamety Jane gaming down the road, well, that's a swiggle. We have kept gaming down, we do not do any casinos, none. We've had 10, 12 people want casinos in Montgomery, we say no. But these guys get the things, and all the rest of them get the state license, we don't charge them anything, and it's strictly a state license, we have nothing to do with it, and if you want to have casino gaming, like she said, you can go to a swiggle, they got six, seven, just a little thousand foot with five machines in, a couple chairs, and that's what you call a gambling casino. So we're not really stuck on this gambling thing, but we have no say in it really, is what it amounts to. I guess that's all I have, I just, there's just too much, I guess, wrong comments, and I live 100 yards from Route 31, and a block and a half from the bypass bridge, and believe me, once I get used to it, I don't hear, I hear a guy once in a while on the bridge, on the engine, but I'm so used to it, and it's not going to bring any more traffic, I'm sorry to say for these guys, you're only going to have that 9,000 cars going, trucks going down there, and it's not a place where somebody's going to come except if it's a neighborhood. So that's my comments, and I'm done.
Thank you. One question that I had, that somebody brought up, do you have, where on the site would you have truck parking? From what I understand, to get the video gaming license, you would need a spot for trucks to park?
Let me have Scott talk about that. Well, we have, in the middle where the truck fueling is, there are spots that trucks could pull up there and park, and it may not even be for video gaming, it could be just because they don't want to get gas, they want to come in for a donut. So there's ability for it to pull up there and stop, but it's just, it's a convenience for the truckers, you know, but as we said before, we don't really anticipate a lot of over-the-road trucks, we're going to get a lot of the local trucks, a lot of the diesel for the businessmen, these guys are coming in before they go out for work for the day, and, you know, so we don't really anticipate a lot of trucks parking, it's not what we expect.
But to get the video gaming, it sounds like you do need to identify some truck parking, and so that would be at the pumps, is what you're saying?
Well, next to the pumps, along the far side there, yes.
Could we identify that with our laser pointer? I'm having trouble visualizing it.
Well, it definitely wouldn't be on the street, I guess that's what we're, that's what we're saying, we do not, and the residents definitely don't want it in front of their houses or in that way.
I'm sure that the board would, you know, they don't want trucks out there either, and so they could pass whatever you want for truck restrictions, you know, but no, we wouldn't want that either, we don't, definitely don't want to be a bad neighbor.
Yeah, definitely.
So we're talking trucks that are 55, 60 feet long, eight feet wide, help me visualize where they're going to park.
So you've got the truck fueling here, but you've got room here for the two trucks to park along this side and then continue out, and just, there was a comment earlier about trucks pulling out here, we'll actually have signs, we do not want trucks pulling around this way, we'll actually, trucks, we'll have a sign here saying trucks to pull this way, now they can pull out onto 30, or they can come back around in order to get to the intersection and go west if they want. We don't want trucks moving through this area, this will be for cars only. And the reason being is, we don't want trucks with trailers, dump trucks, landscape trucks, wherever they might be, pulling through where the cars are at, they don't mix well, so we do everything we can to keep them separate, but you do have to have them come in and out of the lot at the same points.
Okay, so on your plan, you don't identify along your south drive aisle or the east drive aisle, that that would be available for truck parking?
No.
Because it doesn't appear to be wide enough.
Yeah, I'm sorry, these are strictly for car and truck movements, all this is all for circulation. This area is only for trucks here, in the middle, and we did that intentionally, got it from behind the building, moved it up in order to get it away, as far away from the residents to the south and leave this land to the south. Now, whatever happens here with the existing owners along this property on the south, daycare as they suggested, or something else, suggested a church, I mean, there's lots of things that could go there potentially, but future development along that south area will help be additional buffer, but we don't want trucks going out there and parking on Adams either, it's not beneficial for us.
Okay.
I have another question, actually, I'm not sure how this would be handled, but actually, a resident had asked me this during the break, if this were to pass, what is the process for us to put weight limits on the streets that are around that so that the trucks could not park on the residential streets?
Just post no parking? Couldn't you just post no parking on the streets?
I don't know, that's my question, is how do we, do we put a weight limit, how do we handle that?
We already have in the ordinances about residential streets, so I could post that, absolutely, to give them some education about that, but they're already posted, they can't be on the residential street.
Okay. They could be on Gordon, probably?
Correct, come into this location.
Yeah, that's, well, that's a collector, I think, that we have design going all the way down, does that have limits on it as well, or no?
It does. We would, I'd have to research what that limit is.
Okay.
Okay, just to clarify, so our existing ordinance would allow the officers to enforce that on the residential streets?
Correct. Adam and Chad.
But not Gordon?
Well, I have to research Gordon.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
I did have the occasion this weekend to go out to Shorewood. I've been out to Plainfield previously, and I had some interesting, I kind of got a little lucky, I think, because it was their community garage sale day, so I didn't have to go up as a creeper and start knocking on people's doors. I was able to communicate with some of the folks. One of the ladies actually backs up directly to the gas station, bought her house in January, and had no qualms about it. Master bedroom actually looks over the fence into the gas station. She did turn down purchasing on the other side of the road where it faced closer to the front, because there was no screening for the backyard of that property. I talked to a lady that was about six doors further down from her, who was one of the petitioners that passed the 1,000 person petition that they had against it, and it still passed. And I asked her quite candidly, "So how is it? It's been two years." Her response to me was, "It's extremely convenient." Her response was, "It's extremely convenient," and I said, "Well, but what about any negatives?" And, "Ah, there's a little bit more litter on River Road." And I said, she said, "But that's really not on them. That's on the ignorant people that are throwing their trash." And I said, "Well, but if it wasn't there, you wouldn't have it." And she said, "No, it's still on the people that leave the litter. It's got nothing to do with them." So she did, she said that she was concerned, and two years later, she has no concern that it's extremely convenient. Of the nine people that I spoke with, the only negative comment I heard was something about the fence that had broken at some point and took some time to be repaired, and it's a cedar kind of plank fence. That was the only negative comment from any of the residents that were there and in the area directly across the street, which would be the equivalent of our Foxmore Fairfield. No negative comments from any of the folks. Again, I, I agree, this is a highly intense use of this parcel, so I have other concerns, but I did want to share with the board and everybody that I did do my homework, I did go out, and I did get an opportunity to speak to the folks out there, and you're a good neighbor. That, that comment came from two of the people I spoke with, they actually referred to you guys as a good neighbor and good for the neighborhood, so just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Hey, Doug, just a follow-up question for you. The neighbors that you spoke to, I'm sorry, Shorewood?
Yes.
That's where you were. The nine people, were they originally people who were against it?
One of the ladies was the, was, as she referred to herself as, she was the clipboard lady. She went around to get the 1,000 signatures against it.
And, but did the rest of them say how they felt about it initially?
Several of them were against it. The other one was new, she was brand new. The lady did say that it took a little bit longer for that house to sell than maybe it should have.
Okay.
It was on the market for maybe a month or two longer than other houses in that area had been, but other than that, there was no negative comments made by any of these residents. It was kind of an eye-opening experience to, I really thought I was going to hear some bad stuff, especially from the petition lady, and she completely reversed her position.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Trustee Bond, do you have any questions, comments?
I expressed an opinion at the last meeting that it would please me more if this proposal went back through the Plan Commission. I'm not at all comfortable voting in opposition to the unanimous no vote that the Plan Commission offered, three of which are in the immediate area that we're talking about. If we have to have a vote tonight, so be it, but I think we'd be on better footing if the Plan Commission had another look at the way the plans have taken shape. I'm very appreciative of the public's engagement on this issue and the respectful tone in which we've worked through a difficult and contested concept, and very appreciative of your responses to virtually every comment we've made, except the gambling comment, which was an issue for me. I was more neutral on this at the outset, and I really do not want to see gambling of any sort in that residential area.
This board has worked very hard to bring commercial in here, in all, any industry, even a gas station, Dunkin' Donuts, whatever it is, but we've tried hard to get things in here, and we're not going to get them in if we keep turning places down. So it's my opinion that this, this should be put up, this gas station.
All right, thank you, Pete. All right, any other comments from the board? Petition have anything else before we vote on this? I would like, I don't see any, any new evidence or any reason why we would postpone voting this tonight and prolonging this any longer. We've heard a myriad of comments from residents, you know, that really relate to everything associated with the use, not just one specific part of the use, whether it's gaming or diesel, liquor, car wash, Dunkin' Donuts with the drive-through, and that. I will say that they've been very agreeable to massaging the site plan to give a 200-foot or more buffer, which is, which really far exceeds anything that we would request. So I do appreciate that working relationship there, but ultimately today, that, you know, the board, it's the board's wish, we need a supermajority, so we need five yes votes in favor of this, and thus can only, only afford two no votes with it passing. So with that, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance 1799.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, call roll.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
No.
Trustee Marisak?
No.
Trustee Bond?
No.
And trustee Spurley?
No.
Okay, and that fails 4-2. Before, and if, before anybody gets up and leaves, I just want to say that I appreciate everybody's input in this process, and it's all of our job, everybody in this room, to think about what the vision of our town is and what we want in our community and advocate for that and be involved in your community. So I joked that you, that everybody came here tonight because your heart was in it. Get involved in the community, and let's see what we can bring to Montgomery, and really what we're spending our, our time working on, to try and bring developments that we can, that it's easy for the board to approve. This was one of the hardest votes for the board to make because of the residential opposition and because the, the stores that are open in Shorewood and Plainfield are beautiful gas stations that I think are an asset to that community. I think the location here is the only reason why the board's voted unfavorably. So with that, I do appreciate it. All of you do not need to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you're certainly welcome to. With that, we'll move on to the next item, which is, item B, which is appointment by the village president, Philip J. Smith. I really hope the middle initial is J. As our chief of police, after a rigorous interview process, would look to recommend that for approval this evening. Yep, go ahead. Any discussion? All right, call roll.
Was that you? Okay. Trustee Spurley?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And trustee Bond?
Yes.
And that carries unanimously. Certainly do appreciate it and look forward to a long relationship there as well, so thank you. All right, we'll move on to, excuse me, item C, which is Resolution 2018-009, authorizing an IGA for local technical assistance with the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. With that, I'll turn it over to senior planner Chipman.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Before you this evening is a resolution that would allow the village to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with CMAP. The agreement is for the use of CMAP staff in redrafting our zoning ordinance and subdivision control ordinance. So those ordinances have been updated from time to time periodically throughout their lives. However, this will give us an opportunity to start fresh with some people who have a lot of experience in this program. So the village applied for the grant last June, and it was awarded over the summer, and we're just now getting into this phase where approval would kick off the beginning of the project. It will be about a 24-month project with a lot of public participation, so I look forward to getting all of you involved in it. Please let me know if you have any questions.
And I would just like to add that they, accompanying the actual intergovernmental agreement, we did review, we only made a few minor changes, just to massage the language a little bit, so it included many of the villages, just standard terms that we like to see in any of our agreements, but otherwise, it was in substantially the same format as what they sent to us, and they were very agreeable with our changes.
Okay. Any other comments? Full disclosure, I don't need to disclose anything, I'm an unpaid representative on the CMAP board. I represent Canton and Kendall Counties, but again, I don't, there's no conflict there, but at any rate, I'd like to mention it.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Call roll.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurley?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yes, sorry. I didn't realize Pete was here. I was waiting for Pete.
Carries 5-0. With that, we'll move on to ordinance 1811, establishing a comprehensive fee and deposit schedule for building and development. This is second reading. Does staff have anything additional to add to this item?
The only thing I have in addition was in some notes were the land use categories for the different business districts that were shared with the village board. In addition, I did not receive any other inquiries, so if you do have other inquiries, be happy to hear them.
Awesome, thank you. As, like I said at the last time we talked about this, as somebody that looks in development ordinances for a living, having all of your fees in one, one spot, I think, is going to be really helpful for folks in our town. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurley?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
That carries 5-0, thank you. Item E is a PSA with EEI for construction engineering for the Riverside water main replacement.
Pass that to Todd.
There you go.
This is really just for the construction engineering for the water main replacement program. We, you know, dissolve with all of our projects, have you out there reviewing as it's being done, so we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve.
You ready?
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second, but Teresa has a comment.
So I'm trying to look at the timeframe, what's the timeframe on this?
We're going to be starting quite soon. Some of the preliminary work's already been done, and then we hope to be finished with the water main in July so that we can pave the streets later this year.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to recognize and thank staff for, again, the continued forethought to doing these repairs on roadways prior to us patching and replacing, because we see it time and time again out there where our community repaves a road, and then they rip it up to replace a water main, and then there's a patch on their freshly paved road. So the fact that you guys look ahead is really appreciated.
You would think it's just regular logic, but it doesn't happen everywhere, so. And I, I should also add, and I, you know, construction engineering services, I will bet that when the Boulder Hill water main went in 50 or 60 years ago, they probably didn't have somebody on our behalf watching the installation of that water main. You know, they don't watch all of it, but certainly ensuring that it's up to our standards and that is, is vital, as we put this huge investment in the ground, so. So there's been a motion, a second, any other comments? Call roll.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurley?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And trustee Marisak?
Yes.
That carries 5-0, thank you. Item F this evening is ordinance 1800, amending the village code regarding mailboxes. This is first reading, so we won't vote on this tonight. Does anybody have anything additional to add on the topic? You look like you might.
No, I was just going to say, we tried to, you know, put together what you guys had agreed on last time, and just wanted to know if there's any feedback, so before a second reading, we can make any, any changes.
Are we going to do any type of standard? I don't see that in here.
We're just saying that it needs to be installed per the U.S. Postal Service standards.
But in terms of materials, are we going to do any standard? Like we, I don't know, we talked about it, but I don't know.
I don't think we require a standard specifically. That was, certain HOAs have agreements or annexation agreements.
Yeah, because like mine required, ours had to be cedar, where a stand was white, so it would be hard for the village to come up with a standard because those HOA have existing agreements.
Yeah, but the, the village can trump an HOA agreement, and I think one of the, the issues that trustee Bond had mentioned in Fairfield-Foxmore was you have these little poles which are pretty much worthless as far as being able to. So maybe we, I guess, lack of a better term, break the HOA agreement or change the HOA agreement?
Can you do that for an annexation agreement?
The HOA agree, I'd have to look into how set the HOA agreements are. What would usually happen would be, that would be grandfathered, and it would be new things coming forward that it would apply to. What you also might want to consider would be, instead of creating a standard, would be creating what you want to prohibit, rather than, you know, every mailbox must be X, Y, Z. If you are very concerned with a certain material, maybe prohibiting that material, just because there's probably a lot of mailboxes already constructed currently that wouldn't be in compliance. But again, that's a policy decision up to